Okay.
Well, we have to push you.
Right, I've been here enough.
I know, you're the guy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation. We do justice for all.
Thank everybody.
Morning.
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas to you.
Ho, ho, ho.
Yeah.
All right. So the meeting do order and approve the agenda, any corrections or additions?
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carry, minutes of December sixteenth. After reading through them, they look just fine from last week, motion to approve.
I read through them also, of course I did, wasn't here, but I'll second them.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold carry, approve the claims.
I had looked through them for drainage, I had two thousand one hundred and twenty-two point zero five, two one two two point zero five. And for general, I had, uh, two one six, six oh nine, two five. Two one six, six oh nine, two five.
That's what I had also, so I'll second that.
Any other discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Hold carry. General public concerns. Anybody wanna speak? Last chance through the last year.
No, next weekend. It's Monday yet.
No, well, Thursday.
Thursday, oh, that's right, it's Thursday, that's, I have to think.
Okay, man out there?
That's my job, it's to keep you confused.
Ben, not here?
He's coming.
He coming?
Yeah, he's got his hat on.
Come on.
I don't know. Please bring your sidekick Dave along, so he can be. They're getting chatted too, and not recording.
Morning.
My whole week's been a sleep.
What do you know?
We're waiting on you.
It's your turn.
You're up.
Yeah.
You know, you've been getting so used to that, you being a half hour late. Starting to rub off on her.
No.
Morning.
Nobody tells you nice how.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got getting into the bowl game, you're coming, uh, weekend?
Uh, going to the in-laws, so.
Not quite the same business.
No, I'll be, I'll be watching it on TV.
Not quite the same.
Yeah, Florida or Northwest Iowa.
Who doesn't wanna go to Northwest Iowa this time?
That's true, right? Um, for the agenda, I have to approve the secondary road portion of voucher number four. For eighty-five hundred and three dollars. That is line item number eleven. The add-on of, uh, radiant heat for secondary roads portion. And then, uh, the other portion to be paid for out of the ARPA funds is forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents.
You know, definitely to figure that out.
What's that? Thought I heard someone over here rocking it, so people coughing.
Oh, that was the coffee.
Hey, that noise, yeah.
It's been a long time since we've had this thing plugged in.
This, uh, this voucher pays for everything except for the remaining, the remaining roughly fourteen thousand for overhead doors and retainage. So.
On the.
And we did the kind of walk-through, and that's where we have just a few little things that need to be touched up is overhead doors, pretty much.
Yeah, did you go through?
Yeah.
You were gonna walk through with your son and maybe make a list. I know we had a short one.
And that pretty much covered, at least caught one little thing, it just needs to be coughed, basically.
Okay.
Wow.
Perfect.
That's good.
Yeah, pretty much the building itself was really good, just a few of the overhead doors got a little weakened or good.
Yeah, well, the, like, the, the seals, the seals, the flashing around the, the tin flashing on the outside of the doors, the seals on top of, on the sides of the overhead doors, uh, and one of the rollers needs to be replaced, and then there's one panel that's got a crease in it that needs to get replaced. So I'll get a we'll get with you, and if we can just put together a, like, a checklist.
Yeah.
Uh, sheet, I'll get it to Matt and let him know that this is basically our final walkthrough list.
Cool.
So is there gonna be gravel on the west side there, out of them two?
You mean, like, from the approach to the street?
Yeah.
I think someday we'll pave them, but we gotta, gotta let them settle up a little bit.
Right, no, I just wondered.
Sewer run through it.
So we don't end up somebody driving out of there in the spring and bury a sheriff's truck, or guess we got four-wheel drive, would, we can go anywhere?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, there's, uh, there's rock there now, um. Well, as it settles, we'll get it packed in and put in place. Bladed and touched up as needed and.
Perfect.
Okay.
People on the west side, no problem with the lights.
No problem now, okay, cuz they were adjusted and dimmed.
Yeah, and they're all down, so.
Yeah.
It's a different problem with them.
Okay.
They got used to us.
And they did turn them down to silver.
They did turn them down.
So all you're really looking for is approval of the voucher number four for secondary roads.
Yes.
And I would say, per the discussion, it's all good, so I'd make the motion for said approval, voucher number four, for the multipurpose building in Dakota City for secondary roads portion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold carry.
That is the main thing that I have, so we, uh, our office hours this week are today, Thursday, Friday. So, you guys get Tuesday, Wednesday, so.
Sounds like the weather's gonna be good, so not to worry about anything.
Yep.
Might rain a little bit of the week.
Yeah.
Hopefully get off this great, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as guys can get Christmas out home, it should be good. Anything else for me?
No.
Perfect.
Wish you all the best.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And all your team.
Tell them all be safe.
Yeah. Holiday without having to worry about being called in.
No.
Hopefully, hopefully that'll happen, you never know, it's Iowa, it could change in a heartbeat.
Dave got anything for you? You're just escorting us.
I'm with them.
We got work session.
We got that work session.
Okay. There you are. Way too fine.
I did, okay, I just have this really quick, um, for the rec center for the wellness committee, um, this paper here shows what the county did last year, so, um, we reimbursed half of a single membership, regardless of whether they were getting a single plan, a family plan, um, we reimbursed half of the single, the rates are not changing, um, according to the rec center, so it would be the same amounts. The second sheet here is just showing how many employees have utilized, um, the rec center, this is fiscal year, but I mean, if you take just twenty-four, it looks like probably about fifteen-ish employees, um, have utilized it, so just wondering if you guys wanted to do that again, or change the parameters, or what you wanted to do there.
Well, I know our health insurance company already promotes wellness, and, uh, I think the healthier we keep our employees better.
Yes.
It pays off.
Oh, it does, yeah.
So I think we should at least continue what we're doing.
Right.
I agree.
You can't force people to do it.
But you can offer it.
But you can offer it, and it's a little incentive.
It is.
It is. I know they tried to force me to do it.
I got going.
Nah.
I don't see your name on there.
No, it's not.
At least you're honest.
Yeah.
I would say go ahead.
I think so. Have you heard much from anybody, did they like what we're doing?
Um, no, I have not heard.
Okay.
I didn't know if there's any, any grumbling, you know?
No, I have, I guess I haven't heard negative things about it.
Oh, that's what, that's what we want here.
Oh, that's awesome.
We need to, this form is a motion, or?
I think, I think we do.
I'll make that motion to accept the fifty percent membership for twenty-five.
I will second.
Everybody with your session. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, another thing I'm gonna do? We could take advantage of this fact. Good. Good. Well, anything else? First even on the agenda there, if you want. For our information?
Yeah, that's just for, she put it in your packet for stuff for
Coming up.
Budget planning coming up.
Well, move on down. Eddie report. All right, this past Monday, the sixteenth, that morning, wrapped up a project that the de-categorization board was working on with a phone call, so it's just, uh, approve what has been discussed previous week, Monday morning, and that afternoon, at a building families board meeting in Clarion, last one of this year. And that's my period. This little extra Christmas or thing last week.
Uh, let's see, I think it was, um, Thursday, I went out and, uh, talked to my beaver trapper over in the Norway township, and he had gotten four, I really thought he'd get more out of there than what he had, he says he's, there's still one big one in there, I hope he gets it before two one, I'm assuming that's the big female.
He's a trapper.
Alan Weiss. He, uh, works for Paul Anderson, so he's kind of on unemployment too, where, okay, and, uh, seems to enjoy the trapping business, and then he had another spot for me to go look at. I went and looked at it, and I didn't think it was justified, I couldn't see that much activity there, so. That was that, and then on Friday, I did a walk-through on the building over here, and, um, made note of a few things that needed to be touched up, but, uh, overall, it looks pretty good.
Get over on Washington, see if there's any activity on that one over there. Washington and straight east toward both two-fifty.
When you say above two-fifty, you talking higher number or south?
Uh, between two-fifty and two-forty.
Okay, I haven't been up that way.
Whether comes across and goes across the South Road.
Okay.
Right in there, there's usually activity on the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did point that out to him.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that bridge there.
Yep, that's usually.
There's a small dam there.
To that one, where there's usually some activity.
Um, just a small dam there.
Might as well trap them too.
Where are you reputation?
Well, I, I mentioned this, and I don't know if it's something we should talk about, up on Prairie Creek. It's a natural stream, and the beavers are so bad in there. And if you go up there and look at, the water level's backed up high, it backs up the drainage ditch, you walk up this drainage ditch, a lot of the pipes are half underwater, just because of the beavers that are in there, but, I mean, it would be a huge undertaking, cuz they're, they got like seven dams and a half a mile.
Oh, wow.
There's, there's a lot. Oh, yeah, they're busy. Um.
That goes over into Wright County too, don't it?
Yes, and this guy is doing some trapping over there on the boom. So I said I'd discuss it with the board and see if it was something we wanted to look into, um, so.
Does the drainage district empty into Prairie Creek?
Yes.
Well, yeah, you should address that.
Because, like I say.
Drainage district.
It is, and, um, believe me, there's a lot of them, there, I mean, one dam was three foot tall, and they had already froze over, and you'd let the water out, I mean, it's a lot of activity that way. But being it's a private property.
It's doable though.
I think you have to give permission from the landlord, possibly.
I don't know why they would object.
I don't think they would either, and I, and we do know the landlord, so we might check with her.
I would strongly recommend for the outlet of that district.
At least slow them down, because the thing is, they get so many in a certain area, then their young ones go somewhere else, because it's
And they're the ones that they're trapping on the drainage ditch.
And they're the ones that go for your drainage dish and start a new home, so. And with their brush control, it helps keep them, but they still build dams out of cornstalk.
Place to start in that Prairie Creek area.
Yeah. So.
Like the three pigs, can't have beer, you're gonna get cornstalk.
Yeah.
Which one's gonna blow it?
Yeah. Stacks or sticks or bricks, but, um. I'll talk with Todd Lee, I know they get a special permit where they can trap out of season too, sometimes.
Yes.
So.
Some people have that.
Yeah, I know he does, so. Anyway, we'll have more discussion on that later, but the trapping season, I think goes all the way into March for beavers, or March to April. Does it go ahead, March to April, okay.
All right.
That's all I have.
All right, I have to go back to the twelfth for the mobile food pantry, I don't know, did anybody give you the numbers last week, she sent them to me? Well, it was a busy and get it in large, so I can read it here. Um, they had, for the Humboldt Homes, they had twenty-one families. Uh, that was phase one, phase two, they had nineteen. Phase three, they had twenty, for a total of fifty-six. Uh, Livermore had twenty-nine families and fifty-three family members, Humboldt. Total was, uh, a hundred and twenty-seven families and three hundred and thirty-one family members, for a total of, for the entire county, they had two hundred and nineteen families, four hundred and forty-nine, uh, family members. There's thirty-six volunteers, and the next mobile is, uh, February thirteenth. And like normal, when it gets towards the holiday, they, we had all kinds of food, and ended up running out about twelve or thirteen cars left, and but they had some, uh, uh, Humboldt County pork producers had given them some certificates for Hy-Vee and Fairway, so a few of those people got some of those certificates, so at least they didn't go home empty-handed. But there was lots and lots of people, and it was cold that night. Uh, then last Tuesday, I had, uh, on the seventeenth, I had my Edmo finance meeting over the phone. Um, everything's normal on that, so that was all I had for those two weeks.
On the seventeenth, I had the, um, Humboldt County opioid slash alcohol coalition, and, um, we talked about advertisement, cuz the state only allows us to, we get so much money for advertisement to be aware of, um, alcohol abuse, and they're kind of charging in the forty-five plus, that's kind of the, they're finding out the, the bigger area. But we have to be able to prove that forty-five-year-olds are reading this plus, so, yeah. So it's because, like, I love you, state.
Yeah, how do you do that?
Well, we're having a hard time with that, and that's what we're having a hard time, cuz the paper can't prove that they hit that demographic, and we, and, um, the radio can't prove they hit that demographic, cuz that's what I think we originally did with the paper and the radio, and then we found out from the state, and they have to be able to prove that that demographic. So I'm, as usual, kind of anti-state right now. But then, um, we had a Humboldt County Food Pantry afterwards, and we talked about what, what we're going to be doing moving forward. Um, we're in discussion of, of some administrative, what we need to do administratively, we just haven't gotten things figured out yet. Um, on the eighteenth, um, uh, we picked up, uh, um, from Hy-Vee, the food, um, pantry for Christmas meals, and there were, um, a hundred and forty-three meals donated through the Hy-Vee that, the checkout thing, and everything, so it was pretty good, and then we also had ministerial, and, um, we're working together with ministerial, um, trying to get like a first aid, uh, mental health. Um, Allison Hauser was there, and there's different trainings that we can do that we can get, uh, within the church, just to be aware of what's going on, so, because it's been as we said, we talked a lot about, about it, because we found out that, um, last Friday, um, can't remember the exact name of it, it's physician something, but it'll, it's a community health clinic, they're gonna be taking over the entire state mental health. They have never been in the mental health business, so basically, all they're gonna be is the third-party person that's gonna be lining all this stuff up, and then if somebody calls, so there's not gonna be anybody in the counties, unless you're a big urban county, so probably somebody in Fort Dodge, you know, the bigger, I don't even know, they won't have anybody there locally, so it'll be like I said, they've got a, a goal, they just don't have a plan on how to get there, so mental health is gonna be a huge issue. My guess is gonna be for the next five years, on how we're gonna be able to get services, because I think that community health has never been involved with, with, um, mental health. So I brought to ministerial to say, what can we do as a community to help our our people, so that's, we're gonna try to get some kind of task force together and try to figure out what can we do locally, with the hospital, that's great, and that really helps, but they're so backed up. They have sixty, each physician, or therapist has like sixty, where normal therapists have forty, so.
Yeah.
And there's still a huge waitlist, sometimes up to six months.
Yeah, for mental health, they, they got the problem they got right now.
Yeah, that's just it.
They got like going in with a broken leg and saying, I only gotta wait six months.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, it's just, yeah, and that's all I have.
Didn't have any other choice.
I got a question. This opioid money that's coming.
Mm-hmm.
I know trust me to come and commit that it just, it's hard to spend it, because we don't have that huge opioid problem in Humboldt, but we can't spend it on alcohol and things like that?
No, we can do it on preventative, so basically, it kind of interweaves with each other, you know, so we can do on prevention, so we've got, um, for me now, off the top of my head, of course, but she's um, yeah, there's CFR, we're working with CFR, they're doing some preventative things that we can use the money, but there's also that gal from Mercy One, that's, she's a little younger, and first that one gal from CFR is a little, we gotta, you gotta find the right person to do it for the, the younger kids, and we were talking about that in our meeting too, we've got to start, um, it's sad to say, but you gotta start talking about this stuff in, in elementary.
Indeed.
Seriously, I mean, it's, it's bad, but you gotta get them aware of it, so that when they're, and then they have it, and they have a program for middle school, but like, you gotta start, you know, fourth, fifth, sixth, because that kind of stuff is
Something like seventy percent of children in junior high. Try to go.
Yes. Yeah, so it, it's bad, I mean, we talked about that.
It is bad.
In Iowa.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not some of your.
Yeah.
So, so it's getting awareness and getting into school, and there's a lot of at that age we don't want, but you gotta get your kids, you gotta talk, I mean, if, if, somebody's gotta talk to kids, somebody's gotta get them to realize how, how bad it can be and what can happen.
And most of them get it out of this one.
Yes. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leftover pills that don't get used.
Or, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's, it's just, it's sad, but it's what I keep telling my mom when she hears about this stuff, I said, it's the way of our world right now, it's kind of sad, but it's the way of the world.
Can some of that money be used for, for her to buy, like, the marquee students?
That you can get free.
I think we get that free.
You get that free through the state, they just have to be trained, and that's a thing that we've been talking about, we wanna get.
Yeah, I think they hand them out free at the school.
Yeah. Um, you have to be trained, but you can get them, and we're trying to get the churches now to be, um, somebody in the church, because you don't know, I mean, you have new groups and things like that, and so we'd like to get somebody in the, each church trained, or a few of them. So, yeah, and so much stuff is fentanyl, because it's a way to cheat down, so they're, yeah. And that's even scarier, the fentanyl. I'm just, oh, what?
Yeah. It was really bright in our day.
No, this makes me.
Well, I think the CFR is doing something with the communities that they all work with, so.
Yep.
We might reach out to them, and because all of that money has, I mean, they, you have to track that down to the penny.
Right, and they're with us, I mean, they come to those meetings every month, two of them, um, Ramona and, um, I can see her should long ash around here, but, and she's there, both of them are there, and there's usually some, sometimes there's three. And then a few of them will zoom in. So we've got the funds, and that, we just gotta get our plan together and get it going.
Yep, the mental health thing is Iowa Primary Care Association.
Thank you, I knew there is something that's just, yeah.
Yeah, it's different.
But it's basically the, they're the corporate of the community. That it's a community health in Iowa that's gonna be actually doing it, so I don't know, we're, we'll see. We'll see if they can get it figured out between January and July, I don't know, but a lot of the um, region people are ju, and you can't blame them. Um, between the health group is not going to be hiring the region people. So the region people are finding jobs elsewhere and leaving, and those are gonna get farther and fewer in between. And, um, so the state basically wanted to completely change everything around and didn't get, cuz there were other really good people people of the regions that had filled out the RFP, would have been an amazing job, but Elevate would have been, been better than but, okay, I'm done. We don't wanna talk about it no more.
It's getting a little depressing, really, and it's close to Christmas.
I know.
But we know that, we don't want these people doing all this stuff, and they wanna help, and I don't want to get
those that you had there.
No, I
Okay. Anything else come for the board? You set your first of your meeting date, so everybody their life is one that.
Yeah.
That's not, we did, you say Thursday?
We did. We did.
Thursday, the second.
The sec. I just got mixed up.
So Sandy, yeah.
I mean, I just like to get mixed up on my leave and keep everybody on their toes.
Yeah, everyone on before the end of the year.